Well, I was waiting for six o'clock, but.
Whenever it's six, sorry.
Okay, the time is 6:00 PM and I'd like to call to order the January 13th, 2021 Kaiser Planning Commission Meeting. City Recorder has noted the attendance. First order of business, or second order of business tonight is the approval of minutes. You should have the November 18th, 2020 minutes of the packet. So can I get a motion on the minutes, please?
Smart Kellier, I move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Francisco Saldivar, second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Kellier and a second by Commissioner Saldivar to approve the minutes as presented in your discussion. All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, appearance of interested citizens, we don't have our typical sign-in sheet, do we have anybody that wants to comment on anything not on the agenda for public hearing?
Yeah, so Chair Lawyer, we have two attendees, but they are both here to comment on the public hearing portion and I don't have any other attendees on the webinar at this point.
Okay, sounds good, well, moving on. We have before us tonight a public hearing on the amendment to the Kaiser Development Code. Amending Kaiser Development Code, Section 2.114, the general industrial to allow compost facilities as a conditional use. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:01. And invite Mr. Witham and Mr. Johnson to provide the staff report.
Okay, thank you Chair Lawyer and Commissioners. Yeah, so tonight we have before us a proposed text amendment to expand the allowance of uses in the general industrial zone, the IG zone, to include composting facilities. It's kind of a narrow, we're looking at it a narrow path through a conditional use process. And for only those facilities that are enclosed and do not utilize static pile or windrow style composting. This amendment is a little bit unique, it's amendments come in different ways, a lot of times they're staff-driven, this one isn't. This was driven by the development group that approached the city regarding some property actually north of the Volcanus Stadium and the industrial zone. And wanted to inquire about possibly, you know, developing this particular use. And when we started to look into the code, we found that that particular use, it wasn't listed as an allowable use in the zone. And so there are some other uses that are allowed. We looked at the, kind of the proposal of what they're looking to do, using sealed containers. There's, we feel that it is fairly similar to other industrial uses that are kind of classically used in the industrial zone. And so we feel like it is appropriate to allow it, but we also have concerns that we want to make sure that we're not opening it up to kind of your large composting facilities with massive piles that historically create problems with neighborhoods and odors and all of those kinds of issues. So the, I mean, literally the text amendment is, you know, three lines. We're, we're changing some numbers in the excluding section. Because what we found was in the SIC manual, compost fell into one of those categories and under 287. And so we took that category that was excluded out and replaced it with the 287 is the major group that includes 287, 3, 4, 5, and all these other ones. So we excluded those out. And then at the very, kind of the conditional use section, 2.11404, we're just simply adding in composting facilities that is defined and regulated by ORS 227. When such facilities are enclosed and do not utilize outside static pile or windrow composting. One thing about composting, and I kind of addressed this in the staff report and the written report. But one of the pieces there is that we we are not the end-all when it comes to establishing composting facilities, the state is also a player. There's permitting requirements through the Department of Environmental Quality, through DEQ, so those have to be permitted through DEQ. Which looks at design and how they're dealing with storm treatment and how they're dealing with the materials that are on the site from an environmental point of view. And also in the state statute, there are some requirements for any composter to hold pre-application conferences as well as a community meeting prior to making an actual application for a land use approval. So the one thing I wanted to make sure, and we did receive, I received a couple of emails which I forwarded, one of them to you today that I just got today, that had some questions. Which I feel like a lot of the questions are answered in the staff report, I did respond to that individual with some answers to those questions, but also invited them to attend the meeting tonight, which I didn't ever hear back. So maybe my answers to the questions were good enough. But clearly you saw some of those questions posed regarding environmental concerns and odors and those kinds of things. So it is definitely staff's intent that the way we're approaching this amendment gives us the ability to mitigate and ensure that those kinds of concerns aren't when a development, if a development were to happen, that those kind of concerns would not manifest themselves and then be something we didn't want. So that's kind of, that's the approach we took and the intent we took with the, with the text amendment. The conditional use process itself, the criteria is fairly general, but the umbrella is fairly wide, which gives the city the ability to place additional conditions on any development that's a conditional use in Kaiser, across the board. In addition, the specific site that this development group is looking at is within the Kaiser Station area. The amendment is not limiting to this, to say it only can be allowed in the Kaiser Station area. Technically, the way it's written could be allowed in the other industrial land, the IG zones that are in Kaiser. Which those are primarily found down in the south portion of Kaiser off of Campbellwood area there. So theoretically, this amendment would allow the development of a site like this at either of those types of locations. One thing I would want to point out is that if, if this were to move forward and move forward in the Kaiser Station area, there's a lot of additional land use approvals that are necessary in the Kaiser Station. That specific area has not been master planned as of yet. So anything that develops out there, a master plan will have to be done for the entirety of the site to kind of show how it would work. The way our process currently sits, that master plans, that are new master plans come to Planning Commission first. And Planning Commission makes a recommendation to council on master plans that are, that are brand new. Amendments go straight to council, but new master plans go to, to Planning Commission first. So I wanted to make sure to make, I wanted to make sure to put that out there as a clarifying point here. Because I think it's really important, some of the comments I received. I think that when we notice public hearings and folks hear about something being allowed, there's an assumption that we are giving some sort of a land use approval by the nature of simply allowing this use, and that's just not the case. And if Attorney Johnson wants to add to that, I'd welcome his comments on that, but I feel like that's an important piece to explain. So Shannon, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, I'll just echo what Shane said, and that's often the case where people feel that an approval of the text amendment is somehow an approval of an actual application. We saw that in the Safeway gas station text amendment, where everybody thought we were going to get a gas station. And then they never came back for the actual application. I had a question though Shane, I skipped over, where are the, where's that other change you said about exceptions, was there another?
Sure, at the very beginning, under 2.11402E. So number, number two, we changed a couple of those numbers. So we removed the number specific that has the composting use in it.
Which one is being removed?
So before it was seven, it was just 287 as a whole.
Right. Oh, I see. And what's 287.3 then?
I will read it to you.
Well, that's okay, in other words, 287 was composting?
Right, so yeah, so 28, 287.3 is nitrogenous fertilizers, 287.4 is phosphatic fertilizers, 287.5 is fertilizers mixing only, which is potting soil mixed, compost and fertilizer mixed, made in plants, not manufacturing fertilizer materials. And then, and then it jumps to 287.9, I don't know why there's no 287.6 or 7. So basically, we excluded all of basically, the substance of it is, is that category where compost fell in had previously been excluded because of the way the code was written. And we adjusted those numbers, so just that specific one is now not a specific exclusion.
Oh, I see, yeah. Because this is a list of permitted uses.
Correct, and those would have been permitted outright.
Got it, okay, I just got confused on how that is, and then the other comment I have is the, and it doesn't matter because this is just a text amendment, but the the location that these folks are looking at is not north of the stadium, it's really west.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I think it might have been looking originally at the one to the north, but that's not.
It's really more north of the BPA station.
Right, correct, it's north of the BPA station, but Shane is right, this text amendment would apply to any IG zone, so. Okay, yeah, that's all I had as follow-up.
Okay, and I think with that, that's pretty much it from, from my end for the staff report, I guess the one thing I did, I wanted to make sure with the written comments we received, it's a little bit weird because it's not like a normal meeting, but I'll speak to those. We received a letter from Tom Holman, who's a Kaiser resident, supporting composting. He actually supported all kinds of composting, not just this narrow look that we've put on it. And I know we'd sent out that letter previously because I got that one a few days ago. And then the letter I got today from S. Duncan basically had some questions in it. Which were things like where, you know, what type of zoning is composting allowed? And in this case, I think I put, yeah, I did put that in staff report, but in the ag industrial zone, it is currently allowed as a conditional use outright, like the whole all kinds of composting would be allowed there. And then some questions about environmental issues, toxicity, whether or not the business will be opened to the public or only commercial. Again, that, that isn't addressed by this text amendment, one way or the other, I believe. And I will allow Jim and Phil, when they testify, to speak to what their intention is. And, and then a concern about smells, and as I said before, using this containerized enclosed composting practice, not having the static piles and the windrowing. That is kind of where the primary issues with odor historically have come into play. I also know that when the state laws were changed to increase involvement with having the public meeting requirements, that was born out of concerns from odors that neighbors had on, and I think that was in maybe 2014, I think Dina found that information for me. And so, yeah, that's, but that was what her letter, well, I'm assuming it's her, I don't actually know that for sure, but so that was some of those things, and then there were some general comments in the letter regarding knowing more about the specific proposal before getting comments, which again, kind of speaks to that that generalized understanding that, and the clarification that we're not approving a specific development. We're simply talking about whether or not a use is appropriate to be allowed in the underlying zone. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions as I can.
All right. Any questions from the commission before we move on to testimony from the two gentlemen?
I do have some questions. Thank you Chair, so do we know, well, I guess it's really specific to this proposal, but and I guess I could make it more general, what kind of materials go into those enclosed composting machines typically, or specifically for this?
Yeah.
Where do the materials come from too, is another question?
Sure, and I do think, I mean, I think that might be a question for the developer, if you want to know what their plan is for. As far as the composting facilities use, we're not really regulating that outside the scope of what the DEQ would regulate. But that is something that I guess if Planning Commission wants to delve into getting more specific, we would need to modify the proposed language to address that.
Okay, and I, just a follow-up, or a couple of follow-ups, so I think we would also want to know what kind of traffic goes in and out of that property? Bringing in materials and taking out materials, so are there noise considerations and traffic considerations? And then lastly, I was, I was happy for that gentleman's information because he gave a place to go look at a resource Cornell, and so I did take the opportunity to look at some things and I picked up on that those need some watering inside those machines to, to make the composting work, so do we need to consider how much water would also be used in, in that kind of a business?
Sure, yeah, Commissioner, I think those are great questions. The one thing, I mean, from, from, from my end, from a development perspective, those are the kind of issues that are, in my opinion, they're not really unique to this type of a use, that kind of goes with any use that you establish. Traffic is a consideration, service necessities are a consideration. And the one thing we have here, again, in the Kaiser Station, we have a very big, I'll say hammer, I don't know if that's the right term. But having a master planning requirement, there's a pretty robust public process involved with that. But even with a conditional use permit application on its, on its own, some of the criteria we have to justify, or really an applicant has to justify, is adequacy of transportation systems. Timeliness considering the utility provisions and what is available. So those would be things that generally would be addressed through the development permitting process. They normally don't live in kind of the use section process, if that helps.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I've got Commissioner Grinns and then Watson followed up by Kellier.
Yeah, I just have a couple of very general questions. Uh, yeah, I just have a couple of, uh, very general questions, uh, Shane. How many acres does Kaiser currently have zoned IG?
Jeremy, I do not know that off the top of my head. I could find that out for you, but it would.
Looking, looking at the zoning maps, it looks easily somewhere around fifty-ish.
You, you could, you could be right. There's not a ton.
Okay. Uh, and then have you done any research on other nearby cities and their zoning codes? And whether or not this use is allowed in their IG zones?
Yeah. So, um, I did, I did look at some codes and I think what's hard, whenever we start looking at other codes is that no codes are quite the same. So it, in this case, so Salem, which is our closest city, um, which was really the, the best success that I found with it. It is allowed in their, what they call their intensive industrial zone. Um, which for us, we only have industrial general and industrial business park. And then we have ag industrial, which is a whole different animal a little bit. Um, so Salem has several different industrial zones and overlays. So the composting element would be outright allowed in there. I, I believe it's called in, in, it's either industrial intensive or an intensive industrial. Uh, but in their other industrial zones, it's not allowed. Um, those are more those business park zones and things like that. Um, it was actually, it was quite a challenge to find places where these fit. Um, one of the things about this enclosed composting that's proposed is that. There are none of these in Oregon right now. Uh, that it doesn't exist in Oregon and it, this kind of, uh. This kind of a development. Um, and, uh, most of the composting that we have, that we were able to find. They are tending to be in conjunction with solid waste transfer facilities or landfill facilities or other facilities like that. So, um, I, I couldn't, I couldn't find a very good apples to apples kind of comparison to be perfectly truthful. I just, just couldn't. So does that kind of answer your question?
It, it, it gives me enough to chew on.
Good.
Thanks.
Commissioner Watson.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Shane, just off the top of your head, the reason that it would have been excluded in the first place? Would it just because the nature of composting is smelly? There's a potential for leaching and in a. Uh, residential city like Kaiser, there's not, not a lot of room for a big traditional, uh, compost facility, correct? Or is there another reason that I'm not thinking of?
So I, I'm not sure that that is the reason. The reason I'm not. Positive that would be the reason is that we do allow solid waste transfer facilities as a conditional use. So if a solid waste transfer facility were to come in and composting was an element because they were taking yard debris too. It would all be considered that solid waste transfer facility use. I think the more likely reason is, is that that agricultural chemicals major group. Included things that really does those other subcategories. They do have things that are. More chemical in nature. And I, so I think it probably had more to do with that concern. But that's, I mean, frankly, it's conjecture on my part because. That list of uses has been the same since I think nineteen ninety-eight, when this code was adopted.
Okay. Well, the, the big picture is I, I would want to know if the. And, and you're not the composting expert, you're, you're zoning. Um, but for those who are presenting, what I would like to know about is. Do the changes that are allowed from covered composting address? In general, the kind of concerns that would keep a city from having a composting facility. So maybe just a, a prompt for our guests. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuyer.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm still trying to pinpoint exactly where this is going to be cited. Uh, I'm looking at a map. Uh, photo. Uh, and then there's a strip of land to the north of the substation, a strip of land along Tepper. Between the stadium and the substation, the very small, narrow strip of land to the west of the substation to the railroad tracks. Are we looking at along between the Labish Ditch and the north side of Bonneville Substation there is, or BPA Substation? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. So it's next to Labish Ditch slash Labish Creek.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Remember, of course, the text amendment applies to all IG zones.
Yeah, just picture it being in any of the IG zones.
Gotcha. I understand.
So Shane, I just wanted to follow up and maybe I wasn't tracking properly. So if allowing this use in the IG. As a general use in the IG, that would prompt a master plan update? Or is that if we said only in the Kaiser Station area?
So I think what Shane was getting at is this specific proposal would have to go through the extra step of a master plan in Kaiser Station. The other IG zones would be a conditional use. So they still have to go through an application process. Uh, and it'd be approved, but it's not a master plan process.
Yes, thank you, Shannon.
Okay, maybe I'm more confused than I was before.
So, so this particular developer is looking at a piece of ground that's in Kaiser Station. If they move forward with that prod, project and it pencils out for them to do so, they will have to make two applications. They will have to make a conditional use permit application under this new provision. And also a Kaiser Station master plan because that area is not, but by the way, that, that, and that may be part of the confusion. Area A, the big area that we all know and love over there is called Kaiser Station Area A. But north of Tepper is kind of a sub area. It's called Kaiser Station Area A Sports and Entertainment. It didn't get a separate letter, but it has not had a master plan. And the only developable portions are basically the parts that Mark point, Mark pointed out to the north. Of BPA, the land between BPA and the stadium and a, and some land north of the stadium. Everything else is developed. Those areas are subject to a new master plan. So back just to. Do the lawyerly thing and make this even longer than it needs to be is, uh, to answer Matt's question. These people with, for that part would have to do a conditional use permit and a master plan application because that's not planned. Other IG zones would just do a conditional use permit.
So do we, I guess the only other question I have specifically related to that, do, within this text amendment, do we have? The opportunity to specify, so for example, if we wanted to preserve. The IG area to the south of the city for other users, could we say in this text amendment for Kaiser Station? Master plan area only, or is it generally applied IG all, all across the board?
Um, I'll let. That's more of a policy question in a sense. I think the, the, the idea that you're getting at is that maybe that's okay there, but not okay in other areas. And if you are making that as a policy decision, that's fine. Um, I think the question would be to be, play devil's advocate is what's the difference? In IG zone ground between the Kaiser Station location and other IG's ground. Um, perhaps there is a difference because of location of residences or something. I don't know. I don't know, Shane, do you have any comment on that?
Sure. I mean, what, what I will, what my comment will be is, you know, clearly. I, I wrote the staff recommendation. So to kind of whatever, I guess. Pull back the veil a little bit on my thought processes here. Um, you know, this, this ended up as a text amendment. Um, the developer initially sent me a letter, um, kind of pitching their argument for. This could be possibly an interpretation because their use doesn't truly fit in that categorical exclusion. At the SIC manual, which is old from nineteen eighty-seven, um, kind of created. Uh, however, I did not feel that that was, I, I, I did not. They made a, uh, they made some valid points, but at the end of the day, I did not agree with that. With going that route of saying, oh, we could interpret this as being a use that would otherwise be allowed in the IG zone. The interesting thing about the IG zone is there's also this weird caveat in it. It basically says if there's an industrial use that isn't specifically identified as a permitted use. You can actually allow that type of a use through a conditional use process. So it's a, it's a little bit strange to me, frankly. Um, and so that was something that because of the exclusion, we couldn't do it that way. And because I feel that in this kind of narrow type of a development. It seems to me when I look at the rest of the uses in the IG zone. That there is a level of similarity in their operations and what they would be doing on the site. To other industrial zones. So I felt that it, it seemed appropriate to me that it could be allowed in either. But yes, I would agree. That's absolutely a policy type of question. Um, I always. I always get a little bit nervous as a planner when I start to say, oh, we're going to do a text amendment. That's only going to apply to this one little finite piece of property. Because I feel like that ends up kind of feeling a little bit more like a spot zone change. Which is generally not how we do land use plan. So that, but I, but again, I think. You know, clearly there are a lot of cities and other places that have tons of different overlay districts. And additional regulations on specific locations and areas of property. So if that's something that. The Planning Commission wants to look at doing, um. I think we would have to kind of be either given some latitude or possibly have to come back with you, to you. With some modified language of how we would address that. Cause off the top of my head, I don't know exactly how we would accomplish that. I'd have to kind of lean on. The legal department's expertise to help me craft that. Um, but I think if we got the proper policy direction, we could definitely. Come up with something that could implement that desire.
So just a quick follow up, you said SIC for those playing at the home, they don't know what that means.
Sorry, that's right. I, I don't have a jar. I'll, I'll put some quarters in it. The, the SIC manual is the standard industrial classifications manual. It's basically an industry book put out by the federal government that kind of basically categorizes. All commercial and industrial uses that you can imagine, although it seems that. Many, many times, uh, we, myself and, and Dina struggle with trying to figure out when some new user or somebody that's. Doing a business model that's a little innovative or unique, it's hard to figure out, well, which category do they really fit in? So, but that's, that's what our code is connected to for the most part, which in this case, and, and I guess I didn't, I didn't actually say this. But in this case, I specifically made a point to where we're making this allowance. We're not referencing an SIC manual on purpose. We're referencing that ORS definitions and regulations instead.
All right. So Commissioner, uh, one second here. Uh, Commissioner Watson and Kelly, stick up your hands up. You guys got more comments or are we good? Okay, uh, State Attorney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just following up on Shane's point, if you, that's what those numbers are throughout the code. Uh, under the uses, the print, numbers in parentheses, those are the SIC numbers. So that's, that's what those numbers stand for.
Hey Commissioners, if we don't have any other specific questions right now, I'd like to invite our guests to. Um, go ahead and give their testimony. Um, I've got Phil and Jim. Is there any particular order we need to go on on that one Shane?
Um, no, I'm promoting them to be panelists now, so they'll come up on our screen and then we can just, if you want to call on them, I, I think, let's have. Let's have Phil go first, um, and then we can have Jim follow up. Um, and Phil, if you can hear us, you can unmute yourself and then.
Very good.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. Uh, do you need my contact name and address for the record Shane?
Yeah, your name and city of residence, right Debbie?
Yes, this is Phil Martin. My address is twenty-nine eighty-seven Northwest Fairway Heights Drive, Bend, Oregon, nine, seven, seven, zero, three. Let me address Mr. Watson's, uh, questions, I believe first. Uh, I, I think one of the reasons that maybe compost has been excluded in this zone currently. Is because of the typical open windows, which you get, uh, typically you get odors and it's can be kind of unsightly. The benefit with the in vessel composting that we are proposing, they're basically. Uh, upgraded overseas containers, if you will. Everything's enclosed. We. Push air in through the bottom. It goes up through the top. It's captured at the top. It's circulated through a biofilter. And, uh, Jim McNally with Renewable Carbon Management, who I'm working with. He's done twelve or fifteen projects like this around the country. And Jim can speak to this, but he has never had an odor complaint. And so that's one reason we're very comfortable with this site being close to the residences to the west. Is we have never had an odor complaint. And our attempt would be to locate any operating equipment as far away on the site as we could. From those residents to minimize offsite noise levels to those residences. So I, I think maybe Commissioner Watson, that might be a reason composting hasn't been allowed in the IG zone before. Maybe possibly for those reasons.
Helpful example. Thank you.
I think another question was about noise. Uh, yes, there is some noise associated with. Uh, when the, the feedstock comes in, some of it needs to be ground. Before it's, uh, mixed and put into the overseas containers to compost. And then there is some, uh, operation of front end loaders and some other mechanical equipment on the site. So yes, there is some noise. But our obviously intent would be to comply with any noise ordinances that the city has for offsite noise levels. The traffic level to the site, well, there will be some materials. Trucked into the site on a daily basis, the feedstock material, it will be open to the public. We may also have wholesale, uh, clients that, uh. Bring larger trucks in for bulk loading. All of that, uh, those traffic levels, number of trips per day is going to do, depends strictly on. You know, our, our operations and, uh, how successful we are. But as, uh. Shane indicated, when we apply to the city for a CUP in the master plan, uh, we will provide that information to you for, for your review. I think that might be all the questions Shane, but if I missed a question, uh, let me know.
And I think I would just open it up to Commissioners. I know, I kind of told you guys before. Um, I know Phil was open. If you had specific questions for them, he would be willing to field those. Um, so yeah, I, I think that's. Absolutely fine. But if there's, if any of you have questions with Phil, I think that'd be perfect. You could ask him and then we can move on to Jim.
Anything on that? All right, Commissioner Watson.
Uh, thanks Phil. You mentioned other sites. Can you tell me how long those sites have been in operation?
I'll let, uh, Jim McNally speak to that. Uh, Chairman Watson, he's been directly hands-on involved with those projects. So I'll let him just speak to that.
Sure, thanks.
You're welcome.
So real quick, Phil, this is, uh, Matt Warner. Um. One of the concerns I've got is the proximity to Labish Ditch and the potential for environmental runoff. Um, can you talk a little bit about, I mean, I know that a lot of this would go through the DEQ process and under the conditional use permit. But with the experience, and maybe Jim can talk to this more specifically, but with the experience you've got right now. Um, you know, what measures are in place currently that would. Um, eliminate some of those concerns specifically as it relates to runoff and how it can impact our, uh, watershed and the nearby creek.
Uh, if you're talking about Chairman, uh, about leachate from the compost, when it's in the boxes, it is all captured. And all that leachate is kept on site. As far as surface water runoff, the state requires all the runoff to be retained on site. So we would have to comply with those state requirements. And, uh, you know, our final CUP application, I'm assuming would have to include a, some kind of a hydrology plan with our runoff, uh. Information on how we're going to capture and, and maintain and treat the runoff. So all of that would have to comply with, uh, any city and state, uh, requirements. And I'll let Jim McNally talk to the leachate problem in more detail, Commissioner, but, uh. All of it is contained, uh, and kept in the containers.
Okay. Um, if there's no other questions for Jim, we can move on to, or excuse me, for Phil, we can move on to, uh, Jim.
Well, I'm the, um. Inventor of the technology that we're speaking of here. And it's come out of, you know, a great deal of. Trial and. Some error, um, with it, but, um. Um, the first one that we built was in nineteen ninety-two. Um, and that ran for about six months and that was just a, uh, prototype. Um, the ones we built in. Um, the ones we built in ninety-four and ninety-five are, uh, still in operation to a changed degree, facilities get, you know, moved or sold. Um, we have not been in operations. We've been the design build contractor for this technology. Probably closer to you folks would be the, um, Whidby Island Naval Air Station. Uh, and that's in Oak, uh, Harbor, State of Washington. Um, we built that one in, um, nineteen ninety-nine and that's uh, received close to fifty awards as a part of the recycling program there. Um, it's received the composting council facility of the year award, it received a Swana composting facility of the year award. Um, we also built one in Puyallup, north of there, closer to Tacoma. Um, and that site was sold, uh, and the containers were used as conventional roll offs after, you know, a different group bought it that didn't want to continue composting. Um, and we built that one in, uh, two thousand and five. Um, the facility that we would use for, uh, 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 reference here is the one that we built in, um, Cold Spring, Minnesota. And that would be in, uh, nineteen ninety-nine. So that's been operating over twenty years. And, uh, that's a facility that makes a two percent nitrogen compost. Uh, which is fairly high for the composting industry that typically makes, um, less than one percent nitrogen in their finished product. And, uh, they sell to nurseries, greenhouses. Um, they have a bagged product. And, uh, they're doing extremely well, um, you know, with just a few employees. They gross over two million dollars a year. And, um, we've been thinking of trying to replicate what they've done. We would enhance our product here to make, um, an even higher nitrogen, uh, material. And we would do that by adding uh, nitrogenous materials, maybe, maybe fish scraps, grape, pumice, other, um, high-end products. And, uh, you know, move it into, again, your billion dollar a year uh, nursery and greenhouse in, industry you have in this part of of the state of Oregon. Um, you've got, uh, some companies that make bark-based products. Um, we would compete with them. We would, um, uh, work with them. Um, we're very intrigued by what you folks are going through because our technology represents a significant difference in the approach to composting. We're, uh, um, we're science-based. Meaning the way we manage air, way we deliver air, the way we capture liquids, um. The fermentation that takes place, we're really more like a biorefinery than we are a composting waste disposal plant. So we will be making high-creed soils and consistency. Um, these are, these are the goals that we have. We would not be looking at retail. Um, I don't like the traffic. I've been in this field for close to, gosh, um, forty odd years now. And, um, I would rather sell bulk product to other companies that then did the retailing. But again, back to the zoning and the land use conditions that you folks are, um, going through. I've been involved with this, you know, for decades and it's not an easy process. And for you to develop this fine line of, uh, type of composting is significant. And I think it's significant, not just for the state, not just for your community. But I think it's significant for the composting industry. And personally, I, I, um, strongly welcome going through this process with you. Um, you know, how, how do we do the land use planning? How do we go through the conditional use? How do we become the good neighbor that we know we can be? Um, but how do we get the land use so that this kind of environmental technology can work in industrial zones? Um, you know, I don't want to have to go out to the ag sites. Um, I really think we should be able to work within this type of zoning process. So, um, that's kind of where we're at, at the, at the moment. Um, conditional use, you know, that's a route we've had to go time after time after time, meaning my clients. Um, whereas I'm, I'm the client now, so it's, uh, a bit different, but I can, um, uh, work our way through it. We'd like to get through this as quickly as we possibly can. We'd like to be operating next year, um, or this year. But, um, let's, let's see what the land use comes up with. Traffic is a concern, you know, how are we going to get in and out? Um, you know, there's access to utilities. You don't have a lot there. Um, but then that's just our specific site use, but what you're working on is a general use and I applaud you for even trying to, uh, take this on. This is a, like I said, a very fine line, but I think it's an important line and, um, you know, I want to be a part of this process, you know, I think it's you know, good for the West Coast.
All right. Well, thank you Jim. Debbie, uh, did you capture, uh, Mr. McNelly's information at the beginning or do I need to have him state that? Um.
Oh. I, I've got it, but let me make sure. Uh, oh no, I don't have McNelly at all.
Okay, so if you don't mind, uh.
Yeah, great. I should have jumped in with that. So it's Jim McNelly, M C N E L L Y. And I'm the managing, managing partner of Renewable Carbon Management LLC. And I'm based in St. Cloud, Minnesota. And, uh, we, you know, work like Phil had said, all over the country. We've done some smaller projects in different parts of the world. Uh, I've done a lot of consulting. Um, and, uh, uh, this is where we're based and, uh, this is where I put the kids through all years of school and we've got a nice home and, but, uh, I'm a West, uh, uh, coaster. I did all my school years in Southern Californian, used to get up to your part of the country fairly regularly. And, uh, you know, would, you know, like to get a facility going there, so. Um, I'm at P O Box seven four four four, St. Cloud, five six three zero two. My, uh, website is RenewableCarbon.com.
I don't need the website, but I, I didn't get, it was P O Box, uh, seven four 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 and what was the zip code?
Seven four four four.
Oh, same as, as a post office box. Okay.
Right, right. Yeah. Oh, the, or the zip is five six three zero two.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Call, you got a question? I think you're muted Mark.
Spacebar, spacebar does not always work. Um, Mr. McNelly, how many containers are you looking at citing at this particular site?
Um, we would probably start with around twenty to twenty-four. And then we expect that to grow to probably sixty or seventy. Um, I doubt if we would grow any larger than that simply because of the logistics. That would bring us to a goal of sixty tons a day. We would start closer to twenty-five tons. And that's a net mix material going into the container.
Um. What do you do with the leachate?
Typically, we recirculate that back through. We catch it in a, um, small, you know, sump. And then that pumps it to a larger tank. And then we go from the larger tank to the mixer. And so we re-add that leachate back into the front end mix. Um, if we have a facility like Mississippi Topsoil's, uh, where they're taking a very wet, um, daff sludge from a chicken slaughterhouse. Um, they can't handle all of the leachate because the sludge they take is still wet. And so they have an arrangement with the adjoining city where, um, it can be metered into the wastewater treatment system under the control of the wastewater treatment plant because it's fairly high B O D. Um, and, uh, but with the feedstocks we would look at in, um, the Kaiser site, uh, we would put that back into the front end.
Okay, my concern, one of my concerns was, uh, depending on what material you'd be using locally, if you're using, for example, uh, corn waste from local canneries and stuff, that can be, have quite a high water content. And so I was wondering if that would put into the situation as dear leachate problem before.
Yeah, and if we start to get it, you know, hydraulically overloaded, then we would, you know, have to then have a tank and treat it as a raw untreated septage and then we would have to comply. And I haven't talked to your wastewater treatment facilities to see if, um, that would be an acceptable disposal. But, you know, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but
Sure.
I think that's, uh, a definite concern of ours.
And the last question I had, well, a couple, uh, the next question, I have two more. Uh, as far as the filtration, what kind of filtration process do you use to regarding the, the odor?
Sure, um, yeah, we, um, have a ratio of, um, about two or three parts composting mass to one part biofilter media. Um, biofilters have been used for over fifty years. And typically we use dry wood, usually ground up pallets and crates. We've also used bark. Um, and the idea is that the ammonia laden air goes through this media, which is about six to eight feet deep. Again, inside of one of our modified shipping containers. And the adsorption and absorption takes out odorous compounds in the ammonia. And since we're in the organic fertilizer business to a certain extent, um, we want to recapture that gaseous ammonia that other composting sites just let escape to the atmosphere, bringing about a great source of their smells. And so we try and capture it within that media. Um, typically, since we're going to be running fairly high nitrogen, uh, we'll be changing that media out about every six months. And, um, so we would probably use bark, uh, relatively small pieces, probably in the one and a half inch size that would then do the adsorbing and absorbing. And then we would use that bark in some of the planter mixes that we would sell.
That bark, is that, you said, you mentioned that it's a high nitrogen process. Is that bark removed it some of the nitrogen? Is that one of the reasons it's used?
Well, the bark has the, uh, well, all of the, um, woody products have the capacity to adsorb and absorb both. So we've seen that the ammonia permeates even the larger sized pieces of wood and, you know, bark and goes inside of it and turns into a slow release fertilizer.
Oh, okay.
Um, uh, it's a fascinating process. Uh, it gets fairly wet because we have one hundred percent humidity air. Uh, and so we would be putting in some air-to-air heat exchangers to cool that air down, pull some of that condensate out and, um, uh, use that for drying bark, drying soil products. Cause you know, big problem with, you know, the whole Pacific coast is that it gets wet. And so if we can use our own heat to help dry our own product, then we're a little bit more intelligent than the next guy, you know, we don't have to pay for heat. Um, but, uh, but yeah, um, that's a, that's a concern. We have to keep it, you know, dry.
Right. My last question is, why did you choose Kaiser's particularly this site?
Um, well, I wanted to put a site into Oregon. I like that, um, you're close to the populated areas of Salem and Portland. Uh, I like that you've got access to the interstates. Um, another reason why I wanted to be in an industrial park. I wanted all weather roads. Um, and, uh, um, plus, you know, it may sound odd, but I really wanted to go through this type of a zoning process with a community that has a reputation for being pro business. Because this is a business that we're trying to run and we, we expect this site to be here fifty years from now. And, um, so we're looking at, um, you know, a place that fits, you know, and you don't really have a lot of composting in your neck of the woods. Uh, you have to go south to Corvallis and, you know, I've tried working with the folks at Republic and I've just had it up to here, you know, I just don't want to do business with them. Um, and, uh,
Tough and beaut.
And I just like, like your spot. You know, I think it's a good quiet spot, you know, no one here but us chickens kind of.
Yeah, we allow those too. Um.
I don't want you hearing about us.
And ducks.
We've got to be quiet.
Yeah, we do allow chicken and ducks in Kaiser. Uh, okay, well, the reason why I asked the location is because it just happened to be this is very much near a site we were looking at a cogeneration plant, plant years ago, and I just didn't know if that was part of the thinking. So, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your information.
Yeah.
Jim, uh, this is Matt Ware. I've got one question and just something that's stuck out in your testimony. You had said that you don't really have any interest in trying to do this facility on agricultural site. Can you explain that and maybe expand on that a little bit? Why an ag site is a less preferred area than an industrial site?
Well, well, with our approach to containerized composting, where the compost doesn't touch the ground, um, except maybe in some of the curing phases. And some of the, some of the stages where we're making our planter mixes. Um, we want to be in an industrial area. We want to, you know, prove a point, you know, and uh, we don't look at our site needing fifteen acres because we're spread all over heck and bud. We think we can do this with six or eight, you know, maybe if we looked at that entire L and grew it to twelve acres, you know, um, that's about as far as we would ever get. And, um, um, so the cost of the land is not a driver for us, first off. And then, like I said, this fine line of trying to get the zoning that allows high-performance enclosed composting. Um, and making a distinction, we think sets a precedent for other communities to follow. And we would like to, you know, move into other areas of the state, move back into the state of Washington. But then to go after California where they passed some really aggressive laws to keep organics out of the landfill. But no one wants a smelling composting site. And we want to be able to show that we can be in the industrial site. And we don't want to have to get kicked out to the farmland. And so we want to prove that we can be right in town. And that's just a strong point of mine. And uh, I think it's um, you know, a nice place to, you know, be, you know, it's uh, I guess the zoning and the industrial part, I think that's very important.
Well, I guess I have a follow-up for Shane then. I mean, this kind of use is generally allowed Shane in an ag environment anyways, right? So I, I guess my question is, if you know you have an environment where you can go and do this thing as, as generally a use now, just this seems like a lot of extra process to go through. Um, that's not an ag site.
Well, I think that's a good point, but since I've been through this process over thirty times in my career, um, I would rather work with a city's zoning board than a county, just as a general rule. Um, it's just, I don't know, been my preference that uh, the municipalities tend to be more business oriented. That's, I guess that's, you know, me, you know, I just think it's important to make a point and to say we can be a good neighbor in an industrial zone.
Uh, Commissioner Herb?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I, I like that idea um, that Mr. McNally is talking about being in an industrial zone rather than ag land because he's not planting, um, you know, not using farmland. As it seems like, you know, I, I would rather reserve those lands with the good soil and everything to growing things. And if this can be, you know, if these are just going to be containers and and equipment, not using the actual soil and land, then um, this seems like a better zone than an ag zone. Me.
Hey, um, Commissioners, is there any other questions for either Phil or Jim? Not seeing any blue hands over here on the right side. Okay, well, uh, with that, um, thank you gentlemen both for sticking around and speaking with us tonight. Um, I'm sure there will be some additional discussions uh, at some point possibly. Um, but I appreciate that. Um, any other, from the Commission, any other, oh, by the ways, other questions or comments? Um, any follow-up on anything you've heard tonight? Uh, Commissioner Sotomayor.
Um, I just want to make sure I understood correctly, um, uh, Shane, you said that a we could, we already have the ability in our zoning or code to have a transfer station in the industrial area. Was that correct?
Yes, always transfer facilities are allowed as a conditional use, um, currently. And actually, the other thing I wanted to kind of just say really quick, sorry. Um, but if there's no more questions for Phil or Jim, I'm going to put their role back to being attendees so they can continue to watch us. Um, oh, but Shannon's interrupting me.
No, I, 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 I didn't. Yes, as long as they're still hanging on there, um, that, that would be fine. I, Phil and Jim, I don't want you to go away just yet. And Mr. Chair, my suggestion would be to uh, wait to close the hearing until you have some discussion and not close the hearing until you're ready for a motion.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, I mean, and in that case, I can just leave them in their status there as any questions come up for them, we can ask those, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner Sotomayor, did I, did I answer your question adequately? I'm sorry.
Yes, I was just, and then if I understood you correctly earlier, that if this was part of a transfer station facility, it would automatically get put in without any additional um, requirements opposed to the original application for condition.
Well, I mean, sort of, yes. I mean, if, if it came in as always transfer facility and they were doing composting as an element, it would have to be addressed as part of their application. So you'd still have the ability to place conditions of approval on it. Um, but yeah, for based on from some of the other models of where composting happens and compost materials are, are dropped and all of that, it, there are other facilities that kind of fall under that umbrella of it, so.
And as Shane mentioned, it still requires a conditional use permit.
Right, right, right. But there isn't, I mean, I, a, a solid, if anyone's been anywhere close to a solid waste transfer facility, I mean, they're pretty smelly. I mean, you can't avoid that, that piece at all. All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Hossler?
Good evening, my fellow Commissioners, City employees. Let me connect these dots on Kaiser map. Looking at Volcano Stadium and the power station to the west of that. North of that is La Biche Ditch, which is a watershed. Help me pinpoint the location that these gentlemen want to put this site at.
Yeah, so it would, I mean, essentially what we're talking about is the area between La Biche Ditch and the existing BTA substation.
I see. Okay. And so I agree with, go ahead Shane.
Oh, I just was going to say again, stressing the fact that with this text amendment, we're not, we're not at, at this point, the language proposed doesn't specify a location for this type of use. But um, Phil and Jim are specifically looking at that area.
I see. Well, with the, looking at the big picture and, and the work that we've done, a lot of people have done the last, we'll say five years about urban growth boundary and, and, and moving north. You know, we look across the ditch and we see some agriculture over there. Um, you know, the reality is, is we're always in somebody's watershed, you know. And so that is a very large concern that I have uh, about this. In addition, the traffic is going to be uh, added to in the Kaiser Station and we all know that's, that's fun to deal with. So those are the dots that I'm connecting here. Uh, there's a lot of gray area in my mind. And so um, I'll wait to vote.
Commissioner Collier, you have your hand up?
I do, thank you. Um, it was mentioned during the testimony that um, how the process would take place. And I would, one of the questions, follow-up questions I should have asked was, have there, have we had an experience, any experience, have they had any experience with failed containers? Uh, and, and any or other type of spill or escapement issues at any of their other plants? So I guess that's for Jim or Phil?
Yeah, I can take that one. Um, uh, yes, we have had problems with the, with the lining of containers, particularly when we originally made them using modified roll-offs. Uh, none of the coatings that we put on lasted over seven years. Um, and we also had problems with gaskets and lids on the containers. Um, and now we um, use the modified shipping containers. And we put on a ware liner PVC. And that's basically roofing panels that um, protect the side of the container. We've seen the biggest problem from uh, abrasion as the material slides out, um, it scrapes. And so we've addressed that. We no longer make containers with actuated lids anymore. Um, we found that uh, just having to deal with significant gusts isn't, isn't safe and trying to get them sealed is also problematic. Um, and so now we use the standard box containers. Uh, but as far as the process failing, no, uh, that's never occurred. Um, we have mitigated some of that by having um, an easily cleanable floor. But also to make sure that this floor only has to be cleaned like once every four or five years. Um, and that's mostly the gunk underneath the floor, not the floor itself. Um, and so we solved the floor plugging, that doesn't occur. Uh, then we did that by using um, polyurethane floors and polypropylene. Um, and uh, like I said, we've been through quite a bit. And uh, we expect the containers to last fifty years now. I mean, they're just great. I mean, they're Corten steel, they're epoxy coated and they're cheap, you know. And then we do the retrofit and in, in intelligent way, you know. Uh, no, we haven't had a process with, or a problem with the process. Uh, I haven't heard of any of the systems we've ever built having a failure of the drains. Maybe if an operator didn't, you know, you know, hook up the hose, but that's not a problem with the process. Uh, I mean, you know, you have to replace the flexible air hoses about every seven years. But that's just normal wear. Um, the aluminum blowers that we work with, they, they, they've held up great. Uh, we're really pleased with those centrifinals. And so we've designed the airflow with the pipe size, with the container mass. Uh, they work really well, you know. I'm really proud of the technology. And we have a, we have a greatly reduced capital cost now uh, on how we do this. And we want to show that off. And uh, this is important for us, you know. We, we, we want a site that people can come and take a look at. So I guess that'll add to the traffic, you know, but uh, uh, having, having visitors. Um, but um, but as far as the process goes, no, it's just absolutely fabulous.
Thank you.
We've never had a failed batch.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I was just going to mention also, uh, Chair, is that I agree with Commissioner Herb. Uh, in that this, you know, let's grow stuff on agricultural land and, and we can save some agricultural land by, we do have a couple composting sites around to our east of Kaiser in the Salem and just north of Salem. Uh, they're open, they're open composting sites, they, they uh, uh, much, they're actually probably smaller than the acreage we're looking at now. But, and again, uh, with, with Commissioner Hosteller mentioned, I, I, I'm concerned too. I'm concerned about the runoff and I think that's a runoff that in any site you're going to pick in Oregon, it's going to have a creek or something near it, it seems, at least in this part of Oregon. Um, and that, that's a legitimate concern. And that's why I uh, have been asking the questions about process and failure and, you know, and mediation we haven't talked about. But I think we get into that when and if we ever get to a point of actual citing one of these facilities. Thank you.
Commissioner Grans.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, I wanted to clarify a previous statement I made after doing a little bit more looking and doing some of the maps. Uh, there is more like a hundred-ish acres of IG zoned land. There's about fifty uh, alone in, in this Kaiser Station area. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify that. And I wanted to respond uh, to Commissioner Hostler's statement about uh, this type of use uh, in this particular area so close to La Biche Ditch. Um, and traffic, uh, obviously, you know, watersheds are, are important resources that we have. Uh, and we want to protect those. But I'm looking at some of the outright permitted uses that are already allowed uh, in the code. Uh, and pulp and paper, board mills, uh, metal forging, cement, structural clay products. I mean, there's a lot of risk that is there today that if somebody wanted to propose one of these, we, we wouldn't have the same opportunity uh, for staff to come up with additional conditions uh, to remediate some of those risks. Uh, additionally, the uh, the, the further requirement that DEQ oversees these types of facilities. Uh, in my mind, that alleviates a lot of the potential environmental risks. Uh, and then traffic, uh, just some of the potential permitted uses that are there today would have a much more uh, intense traffic use than the types of uh, uh, potential trips that Mr.'s McNeely uh, and Martin have mentioned that they're looking at uh, for this proposed facility. So um, that, that sums up my response.
Commissioner Watson?
Uh, thank you, Chair. And I'll, I'll just sort of tip my hand here. I haven't heard anything that makes me more nervous about this use than I would be for any other um, already approved industrial use. Uh, uh, to Commissioner Grans's point. Um, I'm willing to remove this first barrier uh, of even being able to apply to do it and trust that we have enough remaining gates in place, uh, both at city level and at state level um, for, for other concerns to come up and other, you know, proof of concept, um, proof of planning, mediation, uh, you know. Uh, metered into the wastewater makes me real nervous, but there are other people who know this better, who that would also make nervous, who would be better equipped to consider that question when it comes up rather than, you know, volunteer planning commission. So I don't, I don't see a ton of reasons to continue standing in the way of this, knowing that there's still quite a bit of road left ahead for the developer.
Commissioner Collier, did you get your hand back up there? You're muted again.
Had to be smarter than the computer. Um, yeah, I, and I didn't want to leave any misunderstandings. I have, I absolutely agree with what's just been said by the last two Commissioners. And, and I'm not worried about the traffic. There's actually two ways into this property uh, from the north that I don't have to go through the middle of retail space, uh, necessarily. And uh, I, I absolutely agree. I think we need to move on. Need to get this thing going.
Okay. Any rehashes or last minute, oh, by the ways? All right, so let's go ahead and call the uh, public hearing on this closed at uh, seven seventeen. Uh, Commissioner Collier, do you have your hand go back up? You're still muted.
To make a motion.
I didn't even get a chance to thank these guys for uh, their testimony, but
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, eager beaver.
There we go. Uh, I'd like to move uh, that we accept the staff report as written.
Second.
I got a motion to approve the text amendment to section two point one one four. I got a motion to approve the text amendment to section 2.114 as written. And a second by Commissioner Watson. Any discussion on the motion before us? Debbie?
Do you want to add into that motion that you want to recommend it to council?
The move has amended.
Jeff?
Double check.
Okay. Any, any discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so Debbie, we had one no from Commissioner Hostler. Motion passes with one no. Okay. So moving forward. I just lost my agenda. I'm sorry, because I know we had an extra bit of business we had to look at. I apologize. The agenda. So new old business in the staff report. What else have you got for this evening, gentlemen?
Let me just one second. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so new and old business. I guess the couple of things that I wanted to kind of give some updates on. And then one of the primary ones is a separate agenda item altogether, so we'll address that at that time. But the Area D Master Plan Amendment has been applied for. It is going through its process. It's in its request for comments period. And it is looking, I believe it's going to be at council on February 1st. And Chick-fil-A is the applicant on that. So that's kind of, I know we've been talking about expecting that some restaurant would come in. They are the applicant and they are moving forward with an amendment to Area D. The other couple of projects we have, one, the Housing Needs Analysis Update and Billable Lands Inventory Update, which again, we'll talk about that in a minute on future agenda items because you're going to be getting a presentation at our February meeting regarding those updates from our consultant. And then the other project that I kind of wanted to give Planning Commission a heads up on, I think that we've talked about it before, but I'm part of the Advisory Committee for the Wheatland Corridor Plan. Basically, a concept plan for a new design of Wheatland Road to implement some multimodal transportation pieces and look at some traffic safety kind of pieces. And that's a process that's been ongoing. It's being led by our Public Works Director. And they're looking at, we just had a meeting last week, looking at trying to implement, since we can't do open houses with the COVID and we can't do public meetings as easily. They're looking at, they've had a lot of success with some of the online platforms. And I know Director Lawyer has talked about the success we're having with the Parks Master Plan Update. We're getting a tremendous amount of involvement with the surveys. And so I know they're trying to hopefully get some mimicking and mirroring of that kind of involvement, especially for the folks that are using that Wheatland Corridor on a regular basis. So, but yeah, those were kind of the, the three items on my list that I wanted to kind of give you a heads up on that you may be tapped for information or you may want to kind of be following. And other than that, I think that that's it for me for the new and all business.
And I did it again, second meeting in a row. Dana, I'm sorry, you're so quiet during these meetings. And I said, gentlemen, that I didn't mean to exclude you. I apologize. I'm going to be better. I'll, I'll do better. I apologize for that. City Attorney, anything to add?
Nope.
We got a fresh face here. As most of you know, Council Freeman has moved on to different things. And so it's my pleasure to welcome back to the Planning Commission newly elected City Councilor Kyle Duran. Made the joke before the meeting that he liked us so much, he had to get elected to come back. So Councilor Duran, if you'd be, if you have anything on the city council liaison report.
I don't really have anything. Hasn't been much that I've been involved with yet other than the first meeting and the election of council president. And that was, I guess, the only thing Elizabeth Smith was elected council president. And that's really all that I've been involved with.
And a lot of the committees have newer council liaisons, correct? I mean, and I think in the years past, we've seen counselors kind of rotate similar committees, but it seems like we had a pretty good shakeup this year, right?
Um, I think so. There's a couple that stayed the same, but yeah, they kind, the mayor kind of moved things around a little bit.
Well, welcome, familiar ground, so.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing from more once you start getting, diving into the deep end.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, in Monday's meeting, we, we did short and long-term goals. And there's some new stuff in there that we'll, we'll be getting involved with. So that'll be kind of nice, but there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that's kind of, you know, similar stuff that, that's been going on. But we'll be off and running, I imagine, next, next week with some new, new stuff to get started in.
Looking for the January 19th meeting, which is a Tuesday. I've got that, so no problems there. Shane, talk to us a little bit about the, I know we've got the next meeting and the ratification of the decision to do this meeting tonight on Zoom. Want to talk to us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so you had a second staff report from me on this one, that our legal department was gracious to help craft. And I may have to lean on Shannon a little bit if you have questions on it. But essentially, you know, when we met in November, we had talked about having this meeting Zoom because of the notice requirements and things like that. But there had been discussion on future meetings and what Planning Commission wished to do. And kind of the, the general consensus was to take their cue from City Council with the emergency declaration that kind of runs in these two-month cycles. The council has to revisit that always. And they basically at the last council meeting made the determination to kind of leave it up to the committees themselves to determine whether or not they wanted to meet in person or via Zoom. And so one of the requirements was, is that we needed to ratify the decision to have this meeting in Zoom. And then what I am essentially asking Planning Commission to consider tonight, it's a little bit awkward because the February 8th meeting is going to be held Zoom because it, it has to be based on the number of people that are going to be there because it's going to be all the Planning Commission and the council. And don't forget, it's being moved to a different day. It's going to be held on the Monday night. So it's a joint kind of council work session, Planning Commission work session. But not only do we have too many people to fit in our council chamber with implementing safety protocols and all of that, but we also have a consultant who's in a different city and is also fairly concerned and uncomfortable to be there in person. So essentially, the decision has been made for us that our presentation on the HNA BLI kind of update and where we're at is going to be held Zoom. So you don't really get a say on that one. But what we're looking for is essentially a motion to talk about what we're going to do for future meetings. In this case, we're not going to technically have a meeting in February. And my understanding, and I'll kind of punt it to Shannon, sorry, but my understanding is that because of the timing of the emergency declaration, we may or may not be able to make that decision for our March meeting. But if, for example, I knew for sure that Planning Commission was all on board of saying, hey, we're going to do Zoom, then that gives me the ability to know how to notice future meetings. If I know we're going to do it in person, we can move forward with that perspective. Shannon, am I explaining that right as far as what we need from them?
Yeah. And it is pretty complicated. I won't bore you with the details. Essentially, Shane, we, we helped with the staff report and you can see the indented portion. That's from the latest declaration, emergency ordinance from council. And that kind of came from me. And, and the reason I did it that way, not maybe so much for Planning Commission, but a lot of the commissions and committees don't meet every month. They sometimes meet quarterly. And so I decided it was appropriate and the council agreed that the chair would make a decision because it's kind of hard for you guys to make a decision months in advance. And then you would ratify that. If we were having the regular meeting in February, my proposal would be after you ratify this one, which is a formality that, that is required, that you would have a formal motion on when the February meeting would be. As Shane said, that was taken away from you. So the question really, I think, should be after you ratify the decision for this meeting is more of a, shall we say, informal discussion as direction to chair lawyer for the March meeting. And in other words, all things being equal, which one would you prefer for the March meeting? And then, and the reason that's off is because technically, right now, that declaration will expire March 2nd, I believe. And so we, we don't know for sure if it'll even be allowed to be by Zoom theoretically. By the way, just so you folks know, the regular rule in place, and it's for council too, is you're kind of required to meet in person if there's not an emergency. There's pretty narrow exceptions to that. But because we are in an emergency declaration, you have the right, and I'm glad I thought of this because it wasn't in the report, even if we decided lean towards having a in-person meeting, if one of you felt uncomfortable coming in person because of the pandemic, you have the right without any approval to join by phone, which you normally don't have, by the way. We, we kind of have a rule here, hey, be there in person. But because of the emergency in the procedures, I think you're allowed to do that by phone, even if we do end up meeting in person. So I hope I confused you enough on that. My, to summarize, my suggestion would be to go ahead and pass a motion to ratify the Zoom meeting for tonight. And then a general discussion on what you would like to do, all things being equal about March.
Well, and generally speaking, if, if we're looking to march anyways, I mean, realistically, we would have to know Zoom or in person well before the expiration of the emergency order because of the notification requirements, correct?
Well, yes. I mean, glance at my calendar again this minute.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's, it's generally, I have to have notice published in the newspaper 10 days before, which means I got to send it to them another few days before that to hit their publishing deadlines. So that's one of the issues we have with having Planning Commission being on the second Wednesday of each month generally. It, it just is, we're right in a, we're just in a hard, stuck between a rock and a hard spot.
If, if I could, Mr. Chair, I, I wouldn't concern yourself too much about that timing because I will be involved in whatever goes forward to council. If you folks are leaning, let's just assume you're leaning towards doing Zoom in March and you kind of want to go that direction and we end up doing notice, then it'll be fine because council will make an exception for that, even if they decided to go back in person for everything else.
Yeah, I think, well, first, I think we need to ratify the, the decision to do the meeting tonight on Zoom. So if we can get a motion on the table for that.
I move that we ratify our decision to meet by Zoom at tonight's meeting.
I second it.
Okay. I've got a motion by Commissioner Urb, a second by Commissioner Callahan to ratify the decision to do the Zoom meetings, the Planning Commission meeting by Zoom this evening. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. All right, motion passes unanimously. So as far as the discussion pertaining to March, any strong feelings one way or another?
Chair, I just assume as we keep meeting via Zoom, as long as the emergency declaration is active. But I don't assume that I'm in the majority on that. I can tell you that I'm likely to exercise my option to participate via, via phone if the council does decide to meet in person, as long as I have that option available per our wonderful city attorney.
Okay.
And Matt, I would echo the same thing. I plan on, for a variety of reasons, I plan on exercise my right to attend not in person as long as it seems the appropriate thing to do for my health and my family's health.
I, I would have to agree this, the same way. For health reasons, I think if we can, we could continue with Zoom.
Okay. Anybody chomping at the bit to want to try to do this thing in person? I mean, my, my preference generally is to try to do it in person. I think you get a lot more out of it from just interaction, but that's just me. I think that, although interestingly enough, we had more testimony tonight on composting than we do on most of our amendments. So that was kind of a, you know, compost and chickens, right? So.
Big ticket items.
What's that?
Big ticket items.
I, I suppose, you know?
Ducks.
Never mind the River Cherry overlay district. Let's talk about ducks, chickens, and compost.
So I, I, Chair, I am with you. I prefer to meet in person whenever we can, but I'm ambivalent in our current situation. So whatever the majority of us decide, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. What do we, do we have any expectations, Shane, of public hearing in March? Is there?
So at, at this time, Matt, I don't have something specifically dialed up that we absolutely are going to bring. We had, there was some recent information that we received that I had some conversations with the legal department this morning on where there may be an amendment that I need to get slid in pretty quick regarding some plating requirements and maintenance agreements and how we get some things done because of some requirements from the surveyor's office. And that may, may trigger some adjustments in our code, the way we talk about those things. But honestly, I just found out about that late last week and just had a conversation with a legal assistant this morning. So I don't know that for, for certain. You know, it's a little bit hard. The other thing is, I mean, I obviously, I feel like we had a good discussion today. One of the other things that I originally considered talking about under the other and old business and new business is historically, at the January meeting of Planning Commission, oftentimes we talk about, hey, what's on the agenda for the upcoming year? What are the things we're tackling? We sort of had a discussion on that back in September. We're talking about the efficiency measures and, and some of the places we are at. So I think that that, that may be a little bit of a challenging discussion to have over Zoom. I, I feel like the Zoom platform is a good platform when we have something that's focused and that we can focus on. Whereas when we get into more of that discussion back and forth, it's a little bit more cumbersome. So I, I don't know for sure at this point whether or not we'll have a, a formal text amendment we would be bringing. But the other element that I, that we do need to talk about are some of those kind of big picture issues. I know, and I think Chair Lawyer and I had discussed this at some point in passing. You know, there's a, there's a lot of work and there's a lot of discussion that's happening generally right now. And it, and it came up tonight again with the, the UGB expansion discussion. And there's been a lot of work done. And I think it may be beneficial for the Planning Commission, for us, for staff, for Dana and I and the city attorney to maybe kind of a little bit lay the table for Planning Commission, if you will, to give some reminders on where we, where we've been, where we're at right now. And then one of the, one of the pieces that I would like Planning Commission to really consider is giving some direction as the Planning Commission on how Planning Commission wants to see us as a city moving forward in some of those big, kind of big item kind of discussions. So that's the other thing that we may, we may look at tackling at that March meeting. It's talking about some of the things from the visioning document and the housing needs analysis information we have and then the, the cost of. and then the cost of growth work that we've done to kind of lay out there the whole big picture look. And then the other piece that's a big elephant in the room that we started talking about was that house bill that's going to eliminate single family zoning. Well, that in December, they had their public hearing and we now have actual rules and statute, which Dana and I have been working through to try to figure out, okay, what does this really mean for us? You know, before we had some drafts and we weren't sure, well, now we have some kind of, this is what it means for us come June of 2022. So I think it is imperative that as a planning commission, we start to at least consume some of that information so that we can strategize, the royal we, I'm not a commissioner, I'm at your, I'm at your command, you know. But I do think it's important for me as a staff person to have some, some good understanding of how the commission wants to move forward and how aggressively we want to move forward in certain areas or ahead of that clock or not. And I think that's something that I, I feel it's important that we kind of lay out, hey, here are the things that we're doing, that we've done, and that we're going to be required to do. So, and I'm happy to do that over Zoom. I think it would be fine. It just, it may be a little bit different than if we're, you know, just having a conversation, but we can definitely try, so.
You're saying March is going to be a pretty light meeting then?
What's that?
You're just saying March is going to be a pretty light meeting then?
Yes, yeah, super, super, super no big deal.
So you're bringing the pizza and delivering it to everybody on Zoom. Got it. Okay, so now we don't, we just want a consensus conversation on that. We don't need necessarily a motion on that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It sounds like the consensus generally is Zoom. I mean, it is a pretty heavy lift. But obviously, if we get to that point and it sounds like the declaration is going to get changed or what have you, we can certainly kind of revisit that, right?
That's correct. It'll, it'll be most likely, the direction really, Matt, was kind of to you. So that when the time comes, you can kind of go either way theoretically. Right now, it looks like Zoom would be it, and so that's probably the direction we'll go.
Commissioner Gratz?
Yeah, Shane, on some of these, year, year in preview, bigger ticket items HB 2001. Is it appropriate for you to maybe send out some reading materials to the Planning Commission ahead of a staff report or not?
Yes, I mean, Commissioner Gratz, I definitely think that if that's the route we go in March, that we would, I would definitely want to do that and give you guys some resources to kind of look ahead of time. I think for me, knowing that the direction is Zoom, just with Planning Commission's indulgence, I'm also going to kind of try to dig in and look a little bit to try to, from my own end, strategize what makes the most sense for us as staff. Obviously, COVID affects everybody and our staffing level is, it's reduced for a number of reasons, but COVID also is kind of affecting our staffing levels in the office on a day to day. So I want to make sure, what I don't want to do is I don't want us to have that conversation without enough preparation for both you as planning commissioners and me as a staff person because they are hard questions that come up, that frankly, no one has answers to, let alone me. But, but nonetheless, it's important conversations to have. So one of the things that I will do is knowing that we're gearing up towards a Zoom meeting in March, I will refine and look at what things are on the horizon. And if there is something that might make more sense for us to tackle in that Zoom platform, that's probably what I would gravitate toward. And with, if everybody's okay with it, I'm happy to work with Chair Lawyer over the next month to try to kind of strategize what makes sense for that, for that meeting, if that makes sense to everybody.
Yeah, I think the work starts with the councils going to be good because we're going to get a good chunk of that information there. So it's going to be fairly fresh in our heads.
Yeah, and just to be fair, like, I don't know the information we're going to get from that either. I have a conference call, I think Dana, was it last week we had that conference call with the consultant? And I have a follow-up call next week. So I, in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to have a better handle on what are these findings that are going to be coming out in the HNA and the BLI update. But right now, I don't actually know what they are either. So, but clearly, that's, we don't know until we know. And once we know, that's going to kind of drive, okay, what does this mean for us moving forward? So.
Sounds good. Well, before Commissioner Calley loses too much more of his head there in the background.
I thought he was milking his cow or something.
Yeah. He's muted anyways, so you can't tell his joke. All right, well, we'll, we'll proceed until apprehended on the March meeting. Look forward to chatting with y'all in February. I guess there's a comment here from Commissioner Hostler says perhaps.
That's a steer.
I'm sorry? Oh.
That's a steer.
Good for you. And somebody left the gate open. I think it was lawyer. Or the lawyer.
Language police.
All right, before we get out of hand, any last minute, oh, by the ways? Nothing? All right, Councilor Duran, glad you're here. Thank you all for all the hard work. Appreciate putting this together. And we will stand adjourned at 19, or 7:44. I'm going to go sit in my dark house, so there you go.
Bye, folks.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.